We're on.
And good evening, folks. Uh, it's July 5th. The day after one of the most beautiful expansive and well attended fireworks celebrations in the history of Rutland Town. On the third up at Northwood Park. This is our regular select board meeting of July 5th. George Joanne. Yes. Okay. We have a complete board. Four select board members here and Joe Donato joins us on the on the Zoom. And if you'll join me with the pledge of allegiance, we'll start our meeting.
An Independence Day pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of which is saying one nation under God indivisible.
I'm always proud to say that. I know we all are. Even more so. On a day like today. Our first order of business will be the approval of the orders and I don't see any in here, so. Until we get them. Guess we won't approve them. You didn't, she didn't give them to you, did she Bill? No? Approval of the select board minutes of June 21st, which you have in front of you.
I'll move to approve. I have one small proposal to amend.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve with a small addition. What's up, Mary?
Um, page two toward the top. You were talking about the Act 250 permit amendment application. We should add for the mountain bike trails. Cause we have several amendments and that clarifies it.
After the word application?
Yep. That's all I have.
So. Number five would rediscuss the Act 250 permit amendment application for the mountain bike trail presented to the board at the last meeting.
Sure.
Any other corrections, additions or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain from this job.
With one abstention. Since Joe was absent from the last meeting. I would circulate these for approval. Are there any announcements from board members? No announcements? We will proceed to a manny member of the public who is not on the agenda, wish to address the board on any issue? Anyone out there in Zoom land? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to the committee reports. Chris Clark, our fire chief. You with us, Chris?
I am.
Good evening.
Uh, pretty, good evening. Pretty slow couple of weeks. Only had three calls, I believe. Uh, so not much to report. Fireworks went well. No issues. Uh, it was a good show. Um, if you have any questions for me, I'll take them. But other than that, I have nothing to report.
Questions, board? Fire truck?
Uh, it's in Massachusetts getting some tools mounted on it, so should be very soon.
Okay.
Getting closer.
Getting closer. Okay, thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too.
No, I don't know why. Why do you separate the clerks?
Cause you forgot him last time.
Oh. Because of my confusion.
Barbara's running late, so she's not here yet, so.
So Barbara's not here, so we will have the two clerks in tandem. Carrie. Are you with us?
She's over in the office.
Next door. She's still working in the office.
You might have to skip her if she's.
Yeah, they're up to their, um, in elbow grease trying to get something done.
Up to wear elbows and alligators? Okay, well, that's why we don't have the orders and. Mike could, would, oh. Okay. Good. Carrie Clark will be with us imminently. Barbara Pulling is going to be a little late. So we will skip down to Mike Rowe, who definitely is here.
Evening, Mike. Um, huge thank you to Chief Dumas and Chief Clark for equipment and personnel for the fireworks show that went off last on, sorry, on Sunday night. Um, it was a, uh, huge success. I thought the show was probably one of the better ones that they put on. Um, and it's the same company, Orstar, that's been doing our, since I've been there. Um, they do a really nice job. They did a great job. Uh, the cleanup was pretty good. The, uh, you know, everybody that volunteered their time, we had to shut the park down, uh, because we had that many people. As far as parking spaces, so that's always a good sign. That people are out and about. I heard the school was pretty busy as well, though I don't know, because I didn't get down there. Um, but thanks to everybody. I know Bill was driving a truck and Eddie was in one of the cars and all those for making it run smoothly. And efficiently, especially on the drive in and the drive out. They're out there quickly and that's a testament to our people and how they do business. So. That went over very well. Uh, everything's kind of moving along as normal. The, um, senior luncheon, I think, Mary, if you could help me or Dawn, you know, I think is before we meet next time? I think it's tonight. No, it's the 26th, sorry. So that I, I believe the 26th is the next senior luncheon. So, and that will be at the pool. Uh, all department heads and people of the town, uh, seniors are encouraged to come support our members. It's a really good time to meet a lot of our seniors and interact with them. Um, it's 11:30. We start serving. I believe they usually do 11 o'clock, 11:30 is their lunchtime. It's right at the pool. The guards will, uh, will be, uh, waiting on you and make delicious treats for you. And it's a Hathaway burger and dog. Well, Hathaway burger, not Hathaway dog. Uh, kind of day. Um, so please, uh, let me know. Next meeting, I'll ask for a count so that we can get an idea. So we know how much meat to bring up. And, uh, the guards need to prepare. So it's always well attended, rain or shine. We have plenty of coverage for people. And the seniors really, uh, enjoy it. So Dave, you guys, please come on over. And, uh, and we encourage everyone to come over and mingle with the seniors and have a good time. It's kind of like a mini town celebration, I guess I should say. Other than that, uh, things are, pool's going great. Our numbers are good. Uh, the weather's been wonderful. Um, swimming lessons just ended last week. And session two starts next week. So lots of kids, it goes fast. It does. It goes fast. Um, so our next sessions are sign up now, but by the time they see this, it'll already be in. But we're doing really well with signups and people coming to the pool. And having a great time. Other than that. I don't have much other than our committee report, which.
What about you? Uh, you want to give an update on the 250?
Uh, yeah, the Act 250 permit is just in its signing process now. Dawn signed and we're just waiting for, uh, Tina Keshava to sign. She'll do that on Friday. And then we will start the process of mailing that in for our mountain biking trails, um, at the park. So once it's in, it's up to the state. And like we said before, we know how fast they process stuff. So you never know, it could go really quick. Hopefully we get going by, you know, the end of the summer, first part of fall would be ideal. But we will, uh, wait and see. So we're, we're doing that. Once again, thanking Mary Beth and Andy for their time spent in, uh, making this happen. Other than that, I don't have anything other than our committee report that our committee meeting that we had just previous to this meeting and Sharon can give a quick recap on that, or she can defer to me and I can do whatever she needs me to do.
What would you like to do?
How about if I go over the, what we did, and then you can go over what we talked about as far as the purchase, because that has to come from you. So just an update, we have a capital improvement plan that I, on my second round, um, which reaches out four years. Um, Ed, I mean, uh, excuse me, um, Bill has a copy if you ever want, and I can gladly give you a copy. We have upgraded fencing at Dewey this year. That was on the list. We fixed all our backstops. That wasn't on the list, but it is now. Um, some other things that we've worked, we replaced the door over at Dewey, the garage door needed replacing. I'm sure it was circa 1960 or 70. And so that got replaced. So I feel a little bit more secure that it's there. Um, so that was finished last week. And, um, other than that, that's kind of, uh, we've had some fencing upgrades to repair fencing. So we're moving, moving along nicely. With our capital plan. And like I said, it's a living, breathing document, so it's always going to be changing. But we've accomplished a lot with a lot of help from a lot of people in, uh, short years, so. Very proud of that. Other than that, the other topic we talked about was a mower replacement and I'll let Sharon.
Okay.
Go from there.
All right. We discussed it with us and committee and, um, everybody was here. Joe was not, but everybody else was here. And we discussed that the zero turn is it's, it's in okay shape right now, but um, Mike spends probably at least half of his week, if I'm correct, Mike mowing. So therefore, if that went down, we'd be in trouble. Um, and we, and he's mowing more and more of the property now. Um, and with disc golf and other things, he needs, he needs a mower that we know is going to be a hundred percent. So we discussed a couple of options. Um, we decided, yes, it was time to get a new zero turn. And the price on that. If I'm correct, Mike, John Deere with the extended.
It's 13,7.
It's 13,789. So it started out at 15,741. Selling price was 14,000 324 to us, and then they extended and it comes down to 13,789. Now, we had two decisions to make. We could either keep the second zero turn and, and use that because the walk behind takes a lot longer. So the option is we could use, use the, the old zero turn um, to purchase the new one. And they would give us 3,500 for it. However, if we don't have a backup and the walk behind decides to die on us. Then we're looking at a, a bigger expense. So the committee seemed to agree, the best thing, it, Mike has the money in his depreciation fund, so it's not like we have to go back to the taxpayers. We don't. Um, so we decided the best thing was to get the new zero turn. Keep the old zero turn. And use that at, am I right at Dewey? Or.
Use it wherever it needs to be.
Wherever it needs to be.
And then trade in the, uh, the old.
And trade in the old, um, walk behind. So.
What's your trade in on the walk behind?
Uh, it's like 800 at, at the time. That's what it was. It's, it's a valuable model because of the quality that it was at the time. So that's what it was.
So what happens is, um, as everybody knows, right now with, and it's always the answer is COVID, it probably is, trying to get anything is months and months, if not years, even if you can get it. If anybody's been down by John Deere, there's not much equipment down there, but they have, they have, they do have one. They will have it earmarked for Rutland Town. And, um, we will have it by September, which is fine. Um, we'll get through and we'll limp through and, and keep our fingers crossed that everything goes well. So I am going to suggest, having said all that, that we in fact purchase the new zero turn for, for the 13,789 dollars. Keep the old zero turn. Turn in the walk behind. Um, are we using that as a trade in, Mike?
That would be a trade.
Yeah, that would be the trade in. And we would be set for next year. And I think that's, that's a pretty good planning for our board. So that's, that is a motion.
Second.
And a motion and a second to purchase a ZTR zero turn for.
13,789.
Well, does that include the 800 trade in?
That would be off, whatever.
Okay, so.
Whatever.
Trade in.
It'd be a little less than 13,000.
Right. And that would become from the depreciation, the recreation depreciation. Fun, which we have funds available. Any discussion on a motion?
We're gonna s- are we gonna take the fancy seat off the old zero turn and put it on the?
No, it already comes with new.
Oh, it's got the new fancy seat?
New fancy.
Yeah, I asked, I asked that too.
Well, the new fancy seat that we got, which by the way, thank you, has saved my back, is geared for the old version models. The newer models have their newer, newer fancy.
But we'll have it anyways, because it's on the old.
Uh, we'll have it anyway, so it won't be gone anyway.
Awesome.
Um, so yes, that is still right then and there.
Then we can have the highway department. You, you use the old ones, so they're not beating up on you.
Well, like I said, when you were, uh, you kind of came in late, that was the goal, is that we were mowing so much more than we did. Like I said, we, um, never mowed the transfer state. I mean, the, um, the highway garage, because it didn't exist. We had this one, well, now we do. So there's a whole bunch mowing in there. Some of it's, you know, you go with zero turn, you're okay, but there's, there's spots. The goal is to start to mow the, um, old dump. And make that look rather than we, it might as well look pretty and mowing, it's not going to kill it. And I don't mind doing that. Um, and then the disc golf, and then there are other things that I've started to mow that we would use other apparatuses or just let go.
Yeah.
And so to make the park look nicer, we are mowing way more than we ever did before, when we first purchased it back in 2013. So if that makes sense.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
I was, I was actually kind of disappointed. We didn't upgrade the zero turn the last time this came around. That's definitely a piece of equipment we have to keep up on for sure.
You're right.
And, and like, um, Sharon said, you go down that there, they don't even know. I know there are other models. Um, I like what we have and I like that style and I foresee myself using that for the quite near future. So in talking with them, they can't find any, and they're not sure what production is going to be available for the following year, but they have a couple coming in. And the one that they have coming in is the one that I was interested in. We just have to say, yes, we are. And then when it comes in mid-September, we're good to go. It's like ordering a new truck.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of deal.
Yep.
That's the way it is. Mary, did you, I saw you.
Um, the John Deere dealership, are they preferred vendors?
They.
I've seen them. They were there.
Can't remember.
I believe that, I mean, we think we.
I know we've dealt with them quite a bit.
Yeah, Mountain View, which is now United Ags. They are.
They're the same.
Yeah.
Got one and the same.
They're one and the same.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And I hear none opposed, therefore it's unanimous and you can say yes. Thank John Deere.
So call him and tell him.
I will email them when we're done. And then if they need more, I can have Dawn write up a nice little thing we're doing, if that's okay with you. Nope. Um, other than that, uh, if anybody has any questions, like I said, I'm really, really proud of the fireworks and everyone that helped out. That was huge. We made about 250 bucks or 200 bucks in the concession stand, which was I mean, we're so.
Did you get any parking tips? Did you get any tips for parking?
No, but there are people that would be like, do we have to pay for the fireworks? Uh, you know, no, you just enjoy, you know, go on it. Really? They were, they were surprised.
Town's gift to you.
They were surprised. And people, the, the main thing is when people come into the park, they're like, do we have to pay to come in the park? And I'm like, well, you didn't go by a toll booth, which you would at some parks, like a state park. So I'm like, you can just come in and enjoy the park. You don't have to pay for it.
I thought it was interesting too, that there were more out of town, or towners.
Yeah, there was easily easily two thirds were from out of state.
Wow.
Uh, from looking at license plates and Billy would attest, he, and so would Ed, this was the highest out of state plate thing I've, and the plates I did see. My wife was asking me, I might have recognized 10 cars that I knew.
Wow.
And I've been doing it for 20 years and so I know people that are coming in, like people that I knew that would say, hey, how are you, Mike, Mr. O? That wasn't the case, but they were very well behaved, so. They enjoyed it.
So you had no trouble at all?
Nope. But I mean, a lot of that is because of Ed and his department, because Angie was on the ground walking around and Ed and, um, who was up top?
Uh, I guess. That Chief Walker was.
Back and forth. So there was a heavy presence and that makes life a lot easier.
Sure.
When that happens. So that's why I can't thank them enough. And then of course the fire department for being there, making everybody safe at the end, the lights. So. That's all I got. Unless you guys have anything for me?
No, thank you, Mike.
Oh.
So just grab me your list that you want for the townwide celebration while I'm sitting here, Mary. You just give me a list and I will
Okay.
order whatever you guys need for that. Since you've been into the shop.
We're gonna do this.
Not throwing into the bus.
We are gonna do the.
It's the ladies are taking over for the shopping. I'm not scared.
Yeah, that's fine. I get too hungry when I go grocery shopping. It's not good.
Oh.
Dave, I hear you can cook.
Turn a knob on a stove.
Yeah, cause, cause we might need some help on the grills.
Yeah.
And they tell me you're a good cook, so, and that came from the, from the puzzle palace.
Yeah.
Don't we, we, we would utilize them, wouldn't we, Mary?
That's a she's volunteered you.
He might have to do some running too. I mean, there's a lot of glory standing at the grill, so he doesn't get the grill all the time.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And since you're still smiling, that indicates.
Mary and I are pretty good grill masters.
You haven't vetoed that proposition yet, so. Dave, uh, Sears, our rec, our, yeah, our road commissioner is next up and the floor is yours, Dave. Good evening.
Good evening. First two weeks have been quite eventful.
This is good.
Yeah.
Welcome to Rutland.
Welcome to Rutland Town. Um, first on my list, because I'm just not going to let it go, is the town line road Connor Drive situation. I'm not sure what we're going to do with that. Still going to do with that.
I'll give you an update.
Okay.
I've been up twice. I've knocked on the door of the, what I thought, what I think is the principal residence, which is the one that's on town line road. However, there's another residence on the continued driveway that goes down behind. So I'm not sure. I got no response, even though I heard television or radio or, you know, inside the house. Um, but upon inspecting that tree, that, that, that tree is huge.
Yes.
And it's, uh, looking at the tree. If if we were to be allowed to take the first four, possibly five limbs on the east side of that tree from the bottom up. It would give perfect clearance to any vehicle other than a semi truck. Uh, to be able to see to the west or the northwest um, on town line road. But absent those cuttings, that is probably one of the most dangerous intersections to get out.
Agreed.
Uh, that I have ever experienced in the town. And the cars on town line road don't, do not tend to be compliant with speed limits, number one. Number two, there's a hill on that, on that left or that west, uh, turn. Which makes it even more difficult because the car is coming up over the hill. If they're going at any speed will be on that tree like that. So uh, it's definitely critical, but I haven't been able to make contact, personal contact with the residents. Whoever they, I don't know who they are. The kids or the grandkids.
Yeah. Would you like me to try?
Yeah, well, fine. If, if you know them personally.
I do, personally.
Yeah. And, uh, that's fine. Um, now they might not have been in the house because the property is very well maintained. Other, you know, it, it has a lot of trees on it, but the lawn is well mowed and it's, it's kept up nice, so, um.
Well, in all fairness, if they got teenagers, they crank up the TV or, or they're.
Yeah, whatever.
You know, so they're, they're not going to hear you.
Well, I didn't drive down further. There was a car parked down further. Uh, there's two buildings on the site. It looked like two residences, but uh, in any case. Um, I think it would be a reasonable proposition to take those limbs, just those bottom limbs off the tree. Uh, so when we say trim it, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be like trimming the edges. I would be taking four or five, you can actually see four or five branches right at, right at the tree. And just take them off and take them away. And it would open up the bottom of that tree enough so that you'd have perfect sight distance. And not destroy the tree. So.
Anyway.
You'd want to prune all the way around the tree. That way it looks, looks even.
Yeah, otherwise it's going to be.
Otherwise it's that spruce will look lopsided. If you cut them all the way around, then it'll kind of raise up the base of the tree.
Well.
Look all right.
I would say to give the landowner the option, but.
Yeah.
Um, definitely needs pruning.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I've, I've bought it a few times.
One way or another. And I agree with you, Dave. It's not something that we can let go any longer. I, you know, I just hate to see. I'd hate to see what could happen there. And I'm actually very surprised that it hasn't happened yet, seeing that. I mean, I had my small car and, and I had to inch out. And when I when I exited that when I exited Connor Drive, I had to be boogying. I mean, uh, really to make sure that I uh, would be merging into traffic. And the truck that was behind me, I, I was looking in my rearview mirror and, and he was edging out and edging out and, you know, he was actually in the in the road before he made his turn. So it's, it's dangerous. Any case.
Dawn? Dawn?
There's the.
Hi.
Yes, Byron.
Hi, yeah. That tree that you're talking about has been pruned once. And it was done with the boutwells standing there and they were all in agreement when we, we did that. Bruce Boutwell, his, his cell phone number is on Dave's phone. So you do have a cell phone number for him. And I would just give him a call, meet him there. It wasn't a big deal the last time we did that. But that tree, like any other tree, those limbs are going to grow toward daylight and they've grown back down low enough now, so that like you say, another another whirl or two of branches taken off that tree will open up your sight distance again.
I, I don't know the people, but I know the name and I, I've heard nothing but nice things, so.
Yeah, actually Byron, uh, I looked at it and I think, you know, you're talking a whirl is, uh, one one lap around the tree with the branches that are in that radius, uh, there's, it would actually be like two or three or four in order to get enough sight distance, uh, up the road. That's how, that's how grown in it is, but wha- whatever, um, what's reasonable? wha- whatever, um, what's reasonable? I mean, the best thing to do is to take a couple off and drive a vehicle in and see what you see. But, um, well, what do you, what do you think, Mary?
Well, Bruce, he's got my table anyway.
Pardon me?
I said, he's got my table. He was gonna repair it.
Oh, okay.
What's he do? Repair furniture, Mary?
He's very, very good.
Now, what relation is that to Rita Boat? Cause they, my mother-in-law was friends with the boat.
Yeah, well, the, the Bob and Florence Beltwell.
Okay.
Husband and wife Rita was, was she down? Yeah, she was down on Creek Road.
Yeah, she was around. Yeah.
Sister-in-law. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So anyway, we're all related.
Sounds like the Carafano clan. We got a ton of them.
Billingses.
There you go.
Small town USA.
Yeah. Um, so I will call Bruce and then I'll call you.
Okay.
But
um, one day last week.
No, uh, uh, just, just to short, short circuit this, when, when you guys get together, if you get a resolution that seems to work for you, don't, don't come back to the board. Just do it. Okay. Whatever it is.
Okay.
Get the chainsaws and all the stuff away and problem solved.
Well, good. Uh, so one day last week, uh, we installed some new signs that, uh, were delivered, made the, the second handicap space out here. And then, uh, the directional signs up at Sugarwood Hill. That everybody's been clamoring for. Uh, we went to Och Oak Road the other day. We, actually Friday, we found, we found the end of that culvert. Uh, wasn't easy, but we found it. We put 500 gallons of water in it and it took about a half an hour for it to leak out enough to be able to find it. We uncovered all of six inch rip rap that was covering it, then pulled out two different root balls that were about three feet in length apiece. It was, it was impressive actually. So we still gotta do some outfall work. We're looking at renting an excavator this summer to do some culvert work for some grant stuff we got coming up. So we're over there. It's gotta be dug out. We, we got it down about half right now and it's flowing. Well, we gotta just clean that up and rip wrap it a little bit. So that's on its way to being successfully completed. Um, the pump station that we talked about, uh, post road pump station, we did have that pumped out. That was about a thousand gallons of sludge. It was in the bottom of that. So that's flowing nicely now. Um, on Thursday, this week I have Stephanie from, uh, planning commission coming to give me a, show me how the state wants the, the stuff done for, uh, a grant that we have for outfalls. It has to be completed by the end of September. So uh, it doesn't give us a whole lot of time, but we'll get it.
Now this is for what?
Out, outfalls for, uh, um, catch basin or not catch basin, uh, culvert outfalls.
This is stormwater.
Stormwater.
Some of the grants that on there has been working.
Okay. Okay. So, um, by sometime Thursday, I should have a semi firm grip on that. I hope. Uh, just as a heads up tomorrow, we're gonna start the, uh, restoration on, on that terrace in Gloria Drive after the paving. Uh, do some top sawing and some road edges there. Uh, got the fire extinguishers, uh, inspected the other day. Um, for the first time in a long time, cause there was no tags on them. So we had to throw two of them away cause they weren't any good. So we're up and running there. And my last thing is sad, but they posted Walt's position the other day.
He didn't change his mind, did he?
I'm, no, not yet. I'm trying. So that's, um, uh, Bill posted that, uh, one day last week, uh, we actually got an application. Um, he just got it today. So we're moving forward with that. And that's how it is.
How's the paving coming?
Um, we're waiting for the week of the eighteenth to go to, uh, Cheney Hill.
Okay.
And do our part. Tom Fuller said he's coming in later that week to grade it and get, um, the base on it. And then we're in the big four corner stall on down line room. Waiting for that, for the block's over.
Okay. So that, uh, that reclaim that's on Chaney Hill Circle now, is that at the, is that at the grade that it's?
No, no.
Cause it looks pretty flat still.
Does. If there's, if you stand back and look at it, there's still a little hump in the middle. Um, I think it's not gonna take a lot to get that where it needs to be. But it's, um, I wasn't here when they ground that. And the guy said that it was a lot of like bank run gravel, real kind of gritty. And I'm afraid if we go up there and disturb it, we just got a small plate compactor. We're not gonna be able to pack it back in. We get a big gully washer. It's gonna just be a, a mess. So I'm trying to wait until Tom can be right behind us and we can, we can do our thing and then he can come in with his roller and roll it out. But I don't think we'll be there maybe a day and a half, maybe.
Prior to.
For our, for our.
Prior to the eighteenth.
No, we're, we're going in on the eighteenth. He's coming in later in that week.
Okay. Okay. Good.
So. That's it.
That's it. Thank you very much. Any questions from any board members? Joe?
No, I'm all set. Um, I just had a little sit down with Dave last week. We went over a few things and, um, kind of answered some of his questions and, uh, he seems to, um, have fallen right into this and, and he's doing good. And if he gets in a jam, he'll call me and I won't be able to help him much, but we'll talk anyway.
How's that sound, Dave?
Sounds fine to me.
Good.
Thank you, Dave.
Very much.
Even though you tried to refuse my strawberry shark dick.
I don't need to eat till like Thursday now.
He finishes in less time than I finish mine. Our next report will be from Ed Dumas, our Rutland Town Police Chief. Good evening, Ed.
Evening. So last week we prepared, a lot of us had days off in the year of vacations. So he was really worked one at a time most time. Spent forty seven calls for service, recall, pre-traffic stops. I don't really have much more to report at this point in time, but still have the car breaks in Rutland County area. Uh, same two individuals. We know who's doing it. We just gotta catch them. They've done quite a bit to do that so far. Uh, so if people could leave their keys out of their vehicle, lock their cars, don't put anything they like, it'd be really awesome. We'd have a lot less uh, cleanup to do every single morning when they go through everybody's cars. That's about all I have at this point in time.
So you have to literally catch them in the act or?
Even when we catch them in the act and we do the after Davids, other officers, not us, but the troopers did, they bring them to the judge. The judge says release with a citation, even though they've been caught now at, at least three times. Yeah, new bail laws. So that's all I can tell you.
So the judge is not even, they're not even fining them?
Oh, they get a, get to, they give them conditions of release.
Isn't one of the conditions that they not do it again?
Yeah, but then they just bring them back in and they give them a new citation and then.
Got it.
Round and round.
Now, if you do something like three or four or five times, is that considered a habitual offender or is it gotta be a felony offense to be that?
You would think they would do something. No, it's just, you have to be convicted first. It's only to be charged, nothing to be convicted.
You know, and they know this, that's the, boy.
Hmm. Now you, you haven't had any meetings with any, any of the principals at the southern tier and the?
I spoke briefly today. I haven't spoken to, I brought up some stuff. I've been referencing to the, the court team in as far as, uh, as of July first, the state changed the rules, made them, I guess, more strict again. So, uh, uh, area hotels, motels could make rules or at least work with the life intervention team or whatever, so that they can, if they know there's a problem down there, they can say, well, if you know, if you continue to sell drugs out of your room, we don't want you here anymore. Or if you're, uh, stealing from all the stores and in Rutland County in this area, you can't live here anymore. Uh, but I think there's some resistance from the, uh, hotel owners. I haven't really had a chance to really address it yet, but I'm hoping to talk to, uh, somebody in the near future.
Well, do you have, have you been given or do you have an idea of who is going to create these rules? Is it the state or is it the?
I suspect it has to do, my understanding, it has to do the hotel owners themselves make these rules up at this point in time.
So the strict rules that the?
The Jews.
Let me understand this because we went to a meeting and the, uh, the state DCF director said that there was going to be new rules in place, much stricter come July first. Are you telling me that these rules are gonna be instituted by the hotel owners?
That's my understanding. I don't, the state can do any more than that. I don't, I can't say with any degree of authority on that at all.
Did, were you given any indication of when these rules would be available for you to see what they are?
I asked today. Or is it that, what is it that the life intervention team would like to see? So they have some control to assist these people, to weed out the people who really don't want assistance. They just want a place to stay and do whatever deals or whatever they want to do down there. Even if it's, they just want a weekend away for free, the state's expense. I don't know. But the life intervention team is a group of people that work down there that deal with these people 24/7, seven days a week. The whole time they've been down there and they, they have a better handle on people who need help, who want help, who want to at least follow rules. Uh, they would like to set, I know they would like to set up something so that you have to deal with them so they can help you become not homeless. There's a, a plan in place to move forward for you. And to get those people who wanna work with them to help them. And the ones who don't wanna work with them, then hit the road. You don't stay here. Oh, you wanna steal from our stores? Hit the road. That's what I would like to see. But I don't know if we, I don't know if they have the authority. I don't know if, uh, as you know, there's, there's $6,000 a month per room. So that makes a big incentive to keep as many people at the hotel as possible.
Well, that's another, that's another question that I had because, uh, I mean, I just know what most other people know, the, what's been in the paper. And the, this new this new round of funding apparently has, um, a variable rate structure for hotels. And I read in there that there's a potential for more money to be paid for the rooms on, under this transitional housing program. So I'm just wondering whether well, you don't know yet, you haven't heard, uh, whether we're gonna find out how much per room they're actually gonna be paying for under the new, because this is a whole new funding structure that came from the federal government. So, and it's a, it may be the same people there under the same conditions. And maybe under the same rules because we don't know what the new rules are. But, uh, it's, you know, they've given it another name, but it's still, it's 12 to 18 months. They're just gonna do it in three month intervals. That's all. And they have to reapply.
That's what my.
Every three months.
My understanding.
So, but.
We'll see.
I don't know. We gotta see if we can get more information.
I'll work on it this next couple of weeks.
Well, if you have the opportunity on a follow-up with either one of the two principals, if you would please bring up the issue of the laundry.
That was brought up today, actually, there.
Pardon me?
Well, that was brought up today that people have been asking the hotel, motel, hotel owners to supply them with a washing machine.
Yeah. Washer dryer.
Say, yep, next week. I think they were telling next week, next week, next week. Well, it's been over a year and they still don't have any place to do their laundry. If they had four or five washing machines in each, in each floor, it would probably, these people will be able to at least keep themselves clean. And not have to jump on the bus and bring your children. And it's, it's a whole hassle with public transportation to go down into the city and they come up with, you know, what it costs to do laundry now. When I knew last time I went, it was when my, excuse me, when my, our washing machine broke. I wanna say my wife's wife. I buy her the best. She's buying us this conversation too. It's all.
Be careful.
Bonding man, I know that. So she tells me anyways.
Believe her.
Wanderments are not fun.
Well, unless you got a tanning booth.
I will tell you this, we have gotten, I don't know, maybe 10 calls at the mission this week alone. Will you sign anything that you can't, you have no room for us so we can get the motel room for an extended period of time? No. No. Joe.
Does any, any board member have further questions for their police chief? Great. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Keep up the good word.
Barbara Pulling did join a few minutes ago. So Barbara Pulling did join a few minutes ago. She wanted to add her back to the list.
Yes, I will. I understand that our planning commission chairman has joined us. So Barbara Noise Pulling, you are now up.
Oh, good evening. Thank you. That was quick. Sorry, sorry I'm late. Uh, too many back-to-back meetings lately. Um, so, uh, not too much to report from the planning commission. We're chipping away at a, a few things that we're working on. Um, I'm also sorry that I missed the 5:30 meeting this evening. And so I'm just wondering if there's anything you want me to bring back to the planning commission, um, in regards to, to that meeting?
No, that was resolved, um, that was resolved amicably between the, uh, landowner and the town and um, he has agreed to, uh, as a matter of fact, he said that he, he was, it was already underway seeking a jurisdictional opinion from the, uh, district commission. So on, on any future, uh, building that he plans on that site on Rutland Town lands on that site. Uh, and the ordinance that we have in effect of the building ordinance that we have in effect, which is not a prerequisite to bill, but it is required of, by the listeners. Uh, he agreed, uh, to comply with that and, uh, agreed to pay a waiver fine. So that really gives validity to the enforcement section of our, our ordinance and that we do intend to enforce that.
Okay. Great. So it sounds like there's, there was some action retroactively and proactively into the future.
Yes.
Awesome. Awesome. Okay. Yeah, we're, the, that ordinance, we're still working on, um, and you know, there is some language in there, extraneous language and, and some things that can be cleaned up. Um, so I, I, I think we could make some improvements to it if that's, uh, if that's still, uh, meets with your approval.
Draft them up and we'll take a look at them.
Okay. That's how it works, isn't it?
Should.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be glad to do that.
Thank you. Is that pretty much it?
That is.
Did you have a nice floor?
Oh, yeah. You gotta like those three day, Fourth of Julys.
Yeah, they are, they are kinda nice. Well, thank you, Barbara.
Okay, thank you.
And have a nice evening.
Thank you, Barb.
Next up is John Paul Fagnant, our health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, JP.
Uh, just a quick update under health officer hat, the governor. Uh, just a quick update under health officer hat, the governor recently signed a bill. That gives co-extensive jurisdiction, excuse me, in landlord tenant matters. To a new uh, agency. Or a new department that's going to be assigned uh, to a different agency. They're going to eventually take over. The apartment inspection program because. Assigning it to local health officers has not provided. Consistent results throughout the state in terms of code enforcement. I, I think that's a positive thing. And of course, it also alleviates that cost from um, the town's. Obligation as well. Right now, it's co-extensive jurisdiction, but the plan is for the. Local health officers to be phased out of that portion of the job. Um, hey, Bill, is it possible to show those pictures that I sent to you earlier?
Yeah, which one do you want first?
Uh, just the elevations. We have some. Preliminary elevations. I'm switching hats now. We have some preliminary elevations that we can share with you. Uh, to show um, conceptually. Uh, what the new department's going to look like. On the top, you'll see that'll be the view from McKinley Avenue. And then on the bottom, that will be the view facing the east. And then, Bill, if we go to the next. And then there, um, the bottom is the elevation facing the west and the top would be the elevation facing to the north. We've have completed the bor-, okay, that, I'm all set with those, Bill. Thanks. We have completed the borings on site. There were no unexpected results and. No surprise because the site's been supporting the existing building. Um, so we're still on track to complete and try to get out to bid early this fall. Then going up over to the uh, second constable hat, um, we need to set a hearing. The board needs to set a hearing on my request. That you consider violations of the Perkins Road law. And Bill has the timelines within that, uh, within which that hearing has to be set, but. You need to obviously set it at your convenience.
I thought. We had said it, but I could be wrong. Okay. And does. Is, it's for our next select board meeting, isn't it?
Oh, is that right? I, I was unaware if you've already said it. That's great.
Yeah, I got, yeah, so I, I got, yeah. So we got him served.
Okay.
Uh, Friday.
Okay.
So he got it in hand and I also mailed it to him. So it's going to be uh, July nineteenth at five thirty. Before the next board meeting.
Okay. And he was served with the notice of that hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
The report and the notice.
You get that, JP?
That's July nineteenth at five thirty.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Let's go back to health officer a minute, JP. The, the um. Wh- where, where would this be operated out of? I mean, physically, who? Is it going to be like?
It's going to be assigned as part of public safety for Vermont. So they'd probably be using state offices throughout the state. Similar to other, you know, state agencies that operate. There's, as I understand it, they're going to have uh, that, they're going to have five positions available. And obviously, they want people with code backgrounds, that kind of thing.
So they're going to have five people available for the whole state. To enforce landlord tenant. Whereas now we have. Health officers in. Two hundred and fifty. Towns and gores throughout the state of Vermont.
Correct.
And that's going to be more efficient?
You know, Don, it probably will be because um. The health officer position hasn't really matured to the level statewide, to the level where. Uh, it's much more than in some cases a voluntary position or a very nominally paid position. And a lot of those people do not have backgrounds in buildings and codes. And so it's led to a lot of inconsistent results. And not a very efficient way to handle complaints from both landlords and tenants. And I, and I can see where that would happen. And I do think that it needs to be a state responsibility. It's one of the few areas where we're finally getting the state. Not to shift it down. They tried shifting it down to local health officers and it, it's just not working. So now they gotta pick it back up again. Uh, that doesn't hurt my feelings.
Well, I. I agree with you there, but you know, I'm just, I'm looking at. I'm looking at other state agencies that we've had to deal with in terms of enforcement. Such as fire marshal and, and building inspections and so forth in the southern tier. And it doesn't seem like there's much willingness to enforce the, 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 the rules that they have. I mean.
No, I, I, I know what you're referencing, Don, but. In all candor, Rutland Town has very few landlord tenant disputes that aren't resolved among the people themselves. They sometimes just need a mediator. We're pretty lucky in that regard. So I really don't think. We're going to be impacted that much. And keep in mind too, it's co-existent. So. If we're not getting the kind of motion we need on a particular issue, I'll be able to step in.
So that they haven't taken your authority in that particular area totally away from you then?
No, they haven't touched it at all. They just said that they're going to start exercising similar authority through the state.
Okay. Well, I guess it's a bonus, really. Yeah. Good.
That, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, JP. Have a nice evening.
You too.
And. Our next report will be Bill Sweet, town administrator.
Good evening.
Evening, Bill.
Right. So I'm going to keep that here. Uh, so not uh, much in the packet for sure. Pretty, pretty light. Um. We can do uh, which, which would you like to do first?
Your choice.
Okay. We'll take, we'll take the, when we do the water requests, because those are, those are pretty easy. So you had one in there from. Uh, Robert and Sherry Stubbs for his daughter's house on Post Road on the corner there. Uh, and then.
I thought you were going to do these all on your own.
Well, no, that was, that was the uh, we talked about that for the uh, meeting room. We, we hadn't talked about doing these yet. So we, we talked about doing that, but we hadn't made a decision that that was going to be.
Let's do that right now.
Go right ahead if you want to.
Board members, we, we had talked about. Trying to put some of this paperwork. Um. Well, I call it busy work really because uh. We're talking about small water requests. Uh, Bill has the handle on the water availability. Uh, and. These things are pretty much. Wow. Well, pretty much just boilerplate and the amounts there and he can allocate. Without our approval if we so choose to do that. And I'd like to take that. It's just a little bit of a burden, not much, but it's just more paperwork on all of our desks that doesn't have to be here because. He's indicated that he is capable of doing that and that he would do that. If authorized. So what's the board's pleasure?
Well, may I ask a question first? First question is, are we allowed to delegate this authority under the existing ordinance?
The. Water ordinance is, is, is a little strange. I, I'll, I'll look it up. I don't. I don't think it's an issue, but I'll, I'll look it up and, and.
I think we should do that first, just to make sure.
Yep.
And then secondly, I have no problem with the smaller. The smaller amounts. Um, but when it gets to a fairly larger user, a commercial or an industrial one. We should have some authority to come back to the board.
So. There's, so there's the two, there's the other side of this, which is like the sewer allocation, which actually has a finite number that we have. The water, the water connection request is not really an allocation.
Yeah, that's.
It's just, that's, that's more that, we talked about this for like, when we did the water line on uh, Ranbury Road. It's more of just a notice to us that it's happening. Where the sewer allocation, and I, I, I know what you mean. So like, you know, I thought about that too. It's like, okay, so we have, you know, see like if it's under a thousand gallons. Just.
Yeah.
Take care of it. If it's over a thousand gallons, you know, then we can bring it here for, for discussion. But like, um, oh, when I looked up the meeting room request and. The authority, the authority is there for, for me to approve meeting requests already in the ordinance. So, or in the, in the policy. So.
Okay, so Mary, what, what, did you have a? Did you have a number in mind that would made sense to you in terms of that?
Well, let's start with, let's make sure we, the ordinance has the authority to, to delegate to Bill.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm presuming that. If it, if it doesn't, then.
Let's double check.
Then it's whole.
And then. What's the, it looks like ordinary household is around two hundred gallons.
Water.
Yeah.
Well, I'd say a thousand.
Um, is that? Back to you, that's.
The water connection is, is just a.
It's just a connection.
Notification, yeah. Cause we don't, we don't, we don't have an allocation.
Yeah.
So.
No, I'm, I'm thinking more of.
The sewers.
When there's a, well, the sewer too, but when there's a problem, when there's a leak, when there's water going through a pipe to nowhere.
Yeah.
And it has happened in town and we've dodged the bullet.
Yeah.
Of responsibility, but it'd be good to know at s-, you know, at some level. Do you think a thousand is? The right size too high? Do we stick with two hundred? Do we go to five?
Well, two, two, so two hundred, these, these individuals, both, both had called me about their, their permit and I. There's, there's. Cities that have calculators in them that you put in like square footage and ba-, ba-, bathrooms and bedrooms and people and all that stuff and. You know, we, we don't do enough of them to invest in anything like that. So. Uh, you know, I took a look at some of the averages and said, okay, for a couple people, for a couple of, you know, it's, it's about a hundred gallons. Uh, a day per bedroom is what you, is what we kind of used. So that's why we went with two hundred for both of these, because they were smaller.
Okay.
But you know, it's, it's more of a guess, but we also. With the water number, we don't hold them to, to these numbers because we don't, we don't. Bill for them. The city does. These, these, they would be charged O and M. But we don't say, well, you're, you asked for two hundred, using four hundred, you gotta apply for more. There's that, 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 there's no process for that.
I would think the maximum on a residential property would, five hundred would probably.
Five hundred sounds about right for residential.
I think any commercial, we should take a look.
I agree. Why don't you check that out, Bill?
No problem.
I would, I would still, I'd still like to see these come across our desk. Whether we're approving them or not, because we do have. Some funky water systems in town, like this water line. We can't be approving too many more people who gone to this water line.
That's what we did the study and the floor we attached.
Yeah, countryside estates.
Well, but some of those are like fire districts, because we don't have authority over.
Yeah.
So the, this only applies to any of the money in the municipal line, which.
Yeah.
Aren't very, it's basically the south end of town, some Gleason Road and this. And, and there's, there's really not a lot more to it than that. So.
Yeah, my point, I, I don't have a problem with that, Kurt. You know, the thing is if we. If we go this route and you check the ordinance out, Bill, and let us know, uh, then. Uh, hopefully, if it's not, if there aren't any restrictions in there and the board so chooses. We delegate it to you, but then. As you do them.
Yeah.
Simply as part of your report, notify us that you've approved a water connection for this and that and that, that we'd have it.
So for the.
Without having to.
Do the research. Um, I would move we approve these two water connection requests.
Second.
Is it two? I've only got one in my hand.
The one from Robert Stubbs was the one in your packet. And then there was one from John Clark on the desk.
Right.
Should be.
Here, Don.
Yeah.
You have it right there, don't you?
Yeah. They're both, they're both two hundred. And one's Rob Stubbs and there's nothing you need to sign or anything. The, the one from Rob Stubbs was in the packet and one from John Clark is on the desk. Uh, there's nothing you need to sign or anything. It's just a, just a vote.
Okay.
All it is, so.
Motion's been made to approve these two water requests?
I seconded it.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Is, is this? Yeah, um, well, the first question about this is, is because we don't have, as Bill stated, a water allocation. Um, this is just informational only to, for our part. Is the city requesting a number so they can. Calculate a possible additional usage, um, or, and, and wouldn't that be part of our agreement with the city to be allowed to extend this? Uh, water line, because they've already kind of held this up a little bit because we didn't go back to them like we did on Ranbury Road and tell them this is what we're doing. And that's part of the reason why. This isn't hooked up and flushed and approved and moving forward like it should have. So. Is part of this coming from the city or do we just doing this so we know? Whatever. I'm not sure why there's even a water allocation request or form to be filled out. I, I, I don't understand that. Um, that part of it.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. So this, this actually started a little while before the Ranbury Road water lines. And when we started looking into that. We're like, hey, we actually, we actually really need a connection request. So I, I. Came up with this and took it, basically this is the, the uh. Permit questions, one through four, basically come from the ordinance. They're, they're pulled. That's what the ordinance says. So that's what we, we have. So. I. That's why it's there is because it's there. And that kind of goes back to the uh. The water, that, so the water. Ordinance came out of the water and sewer contract. So. We can't really do anything with one until we do something with the other and we don't want to get into the contract.
Right. Yeah, and I'm not.
Get your question. It's more of just, just to have the information.
Yeah, it's more informational than anything. And, and that's fine. I guess. You know, I didn't under, you know, quite why, because obviously these people, we ran that water line so these people could hook up to it. And, and now they gotta go through another step, which I just think, but if that's what the ordinance says, I'm fine with it. And that's no big deal.
What we do is once, once we, once we approve this, is I send them a letter back that says we've approved your request. And then I also send a copy of the letter to Rutland City. So that way, hopefully, when the resident calls to say, hey, I've got, I need to schedule my water meter installation, the city's aware. That it's going to be happening.
Right.
So it kind of just loops everybody, all three parties in. So we're all on the same page.
Yeah, that makes more sense than any of it.
Yeah. So that's kind of what it's there for is just to. Just to get, just so there's, there's paper to go around to say everybody got a copy of it and yeah, we're good to go.
It's also really handy if you go to convey the property at a later time. You've got proof of water connection.
Yeah.
And serviced by a municipality.
Good.
Did we vote on it? Do we, do we vote on it? I don't remember.
Uh, no, no.
No.
We're still into discussion. We have a, we have a legitimate motion.
Guy that does the minutes later is going to want to know, so.
Legitimate motion in a second. So if there's no further discussion, I'll, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the two water requests, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Then the water requests are approved.
And I'll take care of the rest.
Hopefully, we won't be doing that again, but that's all right.
Here, I thought that'd be the shorter part of these two, two topics.
Yeah.
Um, I should know better. Uh, so, uh, A, from your packet, there's two things in there. Uh, A and A part two, uh. Uh, Vicky from, from VLCT took a look at our personnel policy and. Uh, in the column to the right are her comments about it. Um, and then there is the. Section that I gave the part two part behind there, which has the frequent last questions and answers about Vermont's earned sick time law. Uh, she had very specific comments about our sick time policy. Uh, that needs, that evidently needs to be some changes done to it. So. Uh, the rest of it, a lot of them are very. Easy to accomplish. A couple of her comments actually were already addressed in the policy, just in other spots. Um, so. Uh, largely, they actually kind of did pretty well. I, I, by looking over, I think we did pretty well. Um, there's a couple of things that are very easy to change that, that totally makes sense. Um, and then uh, but some things we might want to, we might want to discuss, so.
Okay, well, it's in the board's hands now and my, my suggestion is, and, and what I intend to do is. Uh, we, we've had this for like three or four days and I don't know how, how much time the board members have put in on it, but I would. Uh, we we've had this for like three or four days and I don't know how how much time the board members have put in on it, but I would, I would rather wait. And give you another two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
And, um, what I would ask the board members to do. To simplify this is to go through each one of the suggestions because, you know, the the. There are some things in here that are. That are part of legality. So that that makes it pretty simple and VLCT is can give us advice on. On on things that are legal.
Know that I have the same front.
Yeah, it's.
No, it's not that.
This, that's the.
That's. It's this one here. No, it's this one here.
Oh, okay. I thought that was your pile.
So, uh, and and others are. Others are a little bit ideological and, um. I would ask the board members to put a Y for yes. Or an N for no. Or a D for discuss. So that when we get to next week, we can go through. And without a heck of a lot of discussion because I don't. Well, first of all. We each have our own opinion on certain things in here and that's fine. And I don't. Want to waste my time trying to convince somebody to change their mind if they've got their mind made up. So if there are three votes or four votes for this, we'll simply say it's in. If there aren't, it's out. And if it's D, we'll discuss it and we'll take a vote in that rather than go through the the laborious process of. Voting on each one of these things.
So I guess I don't understand. Are we to pre-file with you?
No.
Yes, no, and.
No, no, you put it, you put it on, you put it on your sheet, whether you agree.
Most of mine marked up now. I've got most of mine marked up.
Okay, so you put it on the sheet, Y and D.
Yep.
And, uh, after going over and thinking about it. And when we get to, when we get there, we'll do it. But we have an abbreviated meeting tonight and I'd rather keep it abbreviated rather than.
Can I raise one thing to think about for a few weeks from now?
Why, sure.
Thank you. We talk about the aver- the workday for town employees, most of them being from eight in the morning until four thirty. In the afternoon with one hour. Out for lunch. VLCT raises is paid or unpaid. My question is, what to, what is? The work week for town employees? Is it forty hours? Because I think there was some discussion that it was forty hours. If that's the case, it doesn't fit either scenario. If you start at eight thirty and you go to four thirty and you take an hour out of the middle, it's either three, uh. Seven and a half hours. If that hour is unpaid time for lunch or it's. Eight and a half hours. If it is a paid lunchtime. I'm just pointing that out because that is something that's gonna.
I guess.
We need to figure out and and I'm not saying we need to debate it now. I'm just saying that is something.
We can change that because it's something that, it's something that we really should have thought about when we were discussing. The whole issue of what a day is because it's always, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's always been my. Experience over a lot of years of manual labor when I, when I was younger, that if you got an hour, it was not paid. If you got a half an hour, it was a paid lunch, but you only got a half an hour and it was paid. But if you took an hour lunch, it was not part of your workday. And. I experienced that with at least. I don't know, five or six or seven different employers over.
Well, that's my present employer's position. So I work a thirty seven and a half hour work week. And I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Ask if that's what we consider the town employees to be working. And I'm not sure. What do we say about your employment? Forty hours a week?
Forty.
Yeah, so we got a little disconnect there. That's.
Forty.
What's lunch break?
Forty work, forty work hours. Now. Do you take an hour lunch or?
No.
No. You you. You incorporate a half an hour or fifteen or whatever.
Yeah, for for our purposes, it 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 works because. You know, noon is not a thing.
Yeah, if you're in the middle of a job.
Right, also start, you also start at six.
If you get done at one, you get done at one and you kind of go back and clean up or whatever. So.
Yeah. Yeah.
I tend to agree with that half hour, Mary, that you're talking about.
That's, I'm just flagging it as something we all should be aware of. Yeah.
But it ought to be defined. I mean.
Yeah, it's gotta be defined.
Yep.
Okay, I think that was her suggestion. So.
Yes.
So without objection, we'll do that and and we will go through these. And it'll be on the agenda for next, for our next meeting.
So when you go through and you see the commented JM, that's, that's, uh, that's Jackie from VLCT. And then I had a couple, I did have a couple that I. Added to her sources like BS, that's that's my comment back. So.
BS?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I mark most of my man.
That's right.
No, I'm really very grateful that the league of citizens in town spent some time to go through this.
She definitely spent some time reading.
Yes.
She was on vacation and she didn't, well, she's on vacation. So, yeah, she's like, I'm on vacation, but I'll get it done.
Well, that was pretty.
She was very, very, very nice about it and.
I'd make her a strawberry shortcake.
Send it up.
You've got one waiting for her right here.
That exit. So, yeah, I I think it definitely was a worthwhile exercise to have her look through that and she did, she did have a good point. So, uh, all right. So that's it for the packet. Uh, we got the water requests, the minimum approval we talked about. Uh.
We have some contracts.
Uh, we're 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 getting there. Yep. Um, we have, uh, so the Perkins Road hearing. Uh, so I had that. So, yep, July nineteenth, five thirty before the next board meeting and we should be all set. Um, and if, um, on the, on the schedules that I that I email out, if you hadn't seen the last couple. I'm gonna be off next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It's been on there, so. Oh, Barbara's still listening, but that means I'm not gonna be here for the planning commission meeting. Nope, she left already. Uh, so, but I'm gonna be off next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, so. Uh, Robert and I are taking a trip to Arizona for a meeting, so it'll be be way away. So, um, and. Uh, I actually got a, I found, I I was, I found we actually have a permit that we are missing. Uh, that we need to have. So I'm gonna start working on that probably tomorrow after I do the minutes. Uh, we have a flood hazard rule. Um, or basically ordinance on our, on our page and I had somebody. Email me today and ask about it and I and I started looking through it and I'm like. Yep, there it says right there, we're supposed to have a permit and there's no permit form to be to be had. So, uh, I'm gonna start working on it. It is. By the looks of it, not an uncomplicated permit. Um, I am the designated person for it. Does it say the administrative officer for the town? So that's, uh, lucky me. Uh, is the one that gets to do this. So it'll be kind of like the other, the other one, the, uh, the building ordinance one. Um, but it it gets into some heavy usage about flood planes and things like that. So, uh, uh, there is. So so I'm gonna start working on that and, um, the the firm wanted to know when I can get it and I'll probably next week. Uh, but it does ask about the fees for it. So that's the only thing I'm really not sure how we wanted to set. So I know it's kind of. Shot in the dark at this point.
Do you determine if they're in a flood plain or not?
No, FEMA does. So FEMA, you, they they are actually.
We built our house.
Yeah.
We had to get. That permit.
Yep.
And it was from an outfit in Arizona, which my husband went through the roof and said, why in hell? And and if if we're in a flood plain, then Noah's gonna have to drag the air back out.
So what's helpful is the the actual rule. References the FEMA flood plane, the the National Flood Insurance Program FEMA map. So it says specifically in there. Whatever version they have is what we've adopted. So that's very helpful. So I'm gonna add the link to that. Tool to there, but you, and I've tried this a couple of places. You just, you just type in your address and it brings right up where you, what kind of flood plane you're in, all that stuff. And. I have a drawer, literally half a drawer full of maps and they're, they're, they're huge. Now, now I get to get rid of them because they're outdated, uh, thankfully. Um, so. The permit.
So that the fines or the fees you're asked, the fees.
Well, the fees, yeah. So there are fines in there and the fe- the fines are are just like the building notification one, they're a hundred dollars. So so. The planning commission is looking at some of those and saying, probably the amounts are probably outdated. But that's another topic because that's changing the ordinance. But, uh, it does say the select board has rights to set the fee. So I don't know how much we want to do for that. So.
It should be enough to cover your basic administrative costs for handling the permit and doing the checking.
That one's gonna be a little more involved than some of the other ones.
May want to check with other municipalities in the area and see what they, what they charge. And the regional commission, I would guess, would be a pretty good resource too.
Yeah, the, yeah, they they may, um. So, um. Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to say for sure. I mean, and and but it's, there's definitely gonna be more research involved in this because it's gonna be going to verify what they've done, what they've said and. There there it gets, th- this. This actually may. Help, you know, we we it, we talk about like not not having zoning, like this gets pretty heavy. This gets pretty close to the edge, but it doesn't, it doesn't go there, but it gets pretty close to it. So, um, but this one's gonna be important one because I think it applies in more places than we have in the past. So. Um, I'm not sure. Why Noah was asked about it before, but Noah was asked about it before and I didn't see it before because it just, it just was more like flood hazard regulations. It didn't really talk about permitting. So. So I I I'm gonna start working on this and trying to come up with one. I like to keep my permits to one page because it's nice and convenient, but I don't think this is gonna be a one page permit. So. Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll go from there and and I'm gonna try and get it ready for them for for next week because they've got a project they need to put it through for. So. Um, and then. On your desks, uh, we have a couple of different things. We got an updated quote from Johnson Energy. Uh, we we talked about having the molding heaters. Did I give you a copy of them? Okay, um, we've got, we, they, they had the boiler. Uh, there's two quotes there. One is for the new boiler infrastructure for the building. The other is to add molding heaters to the garage to supplement the radiant floor heating. The molding heater quote is actually larger than the replacement of the furnace itself. Uh, and I've talked with them, they said because of the cost of the labor and some of the materials, like the piping, they require seven dollars a foot. Um, and there's a lot of piping that's gonna go in there. So that's why actually the quote for the additional heaters is more expensive. Uh, which is also why he split it into two quotes. So we could, we could do one or the other. So we opened the bids at the last meeting. Uh, and then the highway committee took a quick look at them, uh, and one of them was. Uh, not what we wanted. It wasn't for a, 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 a oil burner. It was for a, uh, uh, heat pump, which would. What wasn't what we were looking for. And then the other, other company didn't specify. Total installation costs because we were obligated to provide our own electrician. So we couldn't qualify a or quantify a. A actual installation cost. So Johnson Energy's quote includes top to bottom installation. Uh, and we retain the old equipment, which, uh, we have, I was talking with Walt about it and he said we've had a couple of people interested already in in purchasing the old equipment. So. We'd be able to retain that and and probably put it out as a, as a bid to anybody wants to buy it and we build sell the furnace and an oil tank. So. We're able to recover some money on that. So the committee was, after looking at those, we, they'd wanted to do the Johnson Energy bid. Um, and then the only decision was if we wanted to add the additional heaters to it. Yep.
So. You, you're not gonna be able to add molding heaters to that heat system. Um, what's gonna happen is your air temperature is gonna come down your building. Um, your molding's gonna kick on to bring up your air temperature.
Hmm.
When the moldings kick on to bring up your air temperature, you're gonna draw down the boiler temperature so much that your radiant's not gonna be able to keep up. Your radiant slab is gonna get cold, your moldings will shut off, your slab will come back up to temperature, which will overheat the building. And then you're gonna get this heat wave. And we've.
They did it as zones. I think that's where they, they, he had said, I talked to Eric, the the tech there for a little bit and he said that's, you you did talk a little bit about that, but that's why it was gonna be. They're gonna be separated out to to minimize that effect.
Yeah, it's it's still, it's gonna dump your boiler temperature.
So you wouldn't recommend it.
I wouldn't recommend the the moldings at all.
And we haven't gone out to bid for the molding part. We did for the, the first part.
Correct.
But you're saying, Kurt, that that modem.
The, the moldings will just. It's gonna make more of a headache in the end. The the radiant floor heating is by far the the most consistent type of heat for a truck garage. As you pull cold vehicles in, it's gonna draw that heat up and then it, your slab's gonna. Replenish your slab temperature.
Yep.
Um, it's by far the best way of doing it. Honestly.
Well, it's the most consistent. Yeah, as well.
I I'd like to interject, Don, I'd like to interject here a little bit that. When we talked with the folks from Johnson. They said that actually. That the, uh. Radiant heat is not designed to recover the air temperature in that building in a rapid manner. Because it's, they're not designed like that. The the fire station in Center Utland has. Radiant heat and no more, and it takes a while for it to come back. I have talked. With the guys at the highway crew that have been in this building since it's built. And when those doors are opened. And the trucks leave or come back in, the. Uh, boiler, the current boiler runs nonstop and it cannot handle the the recovery. That way. So it would be my understanding that since we have talked with a heating professional that designs and puts these in. That they can make this work. The part that needs to be done is that the boiler. Has to be sized to handle the radiant heat. And the moldings. And I do believe that that is the, you know, would be their responsibility to do that. If the boiler is of. Adequate BTUs to handle the project, it will work. The, they work in conjunction with each other. Yes, the radiant comes on and it'll heat and if the building is set to be at sixty degrees. Those, uh, moldings and the radiant circulators will work till that a temperature is achieved. The problem that we have seen in the past is that when that building gets really cold. The radiant alone cannot recover in a timely fashion and it runs and runs. Now. Part of that may be inadequate size of the waste oil boiler. I I don't know. I wasn't involved with how that's done, but. I I would put a certain amount of, um. Uh, trust in a building and a heating engineering design to come up with a proper size of both of those. The thing that we have to keep in mind is. If we just put in a boiler that's adequate to handle the radiant slab at this time. And and reheat the building, you know, to do whatever. And then we find it doesn't work. And you have to add a couple of moldings in there to help bring that air temperature up and get that. Back to whatever the set temperature is, you're probably gonna have to change boilers because they have to be sized to handle. Each, uh, phase of what's going on. So they work in conjunction and they don't compete with each other. The only way that the boiler. Will the temperature will drop below below its be heating temperature is if it's of inadequate size. So so we have to be careful what we do here. You, you can just put a boiler in there to handle the radiant, but don't expect it, if it doesn't work, to go back later and say, oh, well. We want to add two moldings in these days to help do this. And then we find out. Now we gotta have a new boiler. So we need to be really careful and we need to have exactly the correct information because. An undersized boiler is going to be a bigger problem than adding, uh, larger demand with the moldings. Um, McKinley Avenue Station doesn't have radiant heat and it has just moldings in there and it's worked pretty good, but. Uh, they have to work in conjunction and they have to be designed to work together with an adequate boiler. So so we need to. Make sure we know what we're doing before we make any decisions tonight.
So, Joe, the boiler included in the bid is sufficient to do both systems. We we made sure of that. So, yeah, the boiler that he's included in his bid pricing is the ru- is to sufficiently run. The, the two moldings and the radiant hit floor system. So if we did, and we did, that's why we did the two quotes. So if we did not do the moldings. Now, they could be added later without, without having to change the boiler.
Okay, I mean, that that is critical. Absolutely critical. And and I defer to somebody that does this for a living, you know, this is what their line of expertise is, is, you know, they are installing this stuff. And and that's, you know, some of the other stuff is opinion and opinion is fine, but. I would refer to the guys that build these things, install them and understand the situation because it was Johnson Energy. That told us that the radiant slab is not designed for that quick recovery. Of the air temperature and that building will stay cold until it can in bring the temperature back up where if you have the. They suggested putting the moldings in for a quicker and more efficient recovery of the, uh, desired temperature. And that's why I told Billy to ask them what it would cost to to set it up the way they said. You know, they think it should be done. And and that's why we have the second bit.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with you a hundred percent, Joe, because. I have both radiant heat and uh, radiant heat in the concrete. In my home and. Radiant heat is designed to heat a slab. And. That mass basically holds the temperature. So when those doors open up. It's not like it's gonna. Bring that slab back down to zero. But the point is that that unless those doors are left open for a long time, that slab is gonna maintain its heat. Now, the beauty of radiant is. That it takes quite a bit of energy to heat them up. But then it takes very little. To feather them to maintain that temperature. So the radiant slab would be. The efficient part of that building when the doors are closed and the equipment is in there and it's on the floor because the beauty of that radiant heat is it heats everything. It heats the floor and everything that's on it. Like our. You know, the couch in our house. I mean, we've got that's radiant in the floor, in the in the wood floors, but it's the same thing downstairs. So. So that is a constant heat. When the doors are open and that. Shock hits the. Air above. The modings will kick in. To bring that back to the ambient temperature that the radiant wants to maintain. So I agree with Joe that the the key to the whole, the key to that balance, Kurt, is gonna be. Proper sizing of the boiler.
What you have to understand is the temperature roller coaster that is gonna come from that. I I have a radiant slab in my house. You light a fire in the fireplace because it gets a little cold at dusk. Next thing you know. The house is ninety degrees. And you're gonna have and you have that. Temperature roller coaster because your slab is gonna warm up as the temperature gets cold. It's gonna kick your thermostat on. That slab is gonna get over warm, then say you light your fireplace or your modings kick on. That's gonna bring your room temperature up, kick your thermostat off, but then your slab's gonna be over warm. And you're gonna have a temperature spike. I've seen it multiple times. I mean, not not just in my place, but in places we've built over the years. You if you're going radiant, you have to stay radiant hundred percent. Unless you're gonna have a separate.
Not according, but not according to the people that do this for a living, Kurt. Johnson Energy is telling us that slab will not recover in a efficient time. So. I'm gonna, like I said before, I would defer to their expertise because this is their line of work. I, you know, if you are doing some construction work for them. And they want to tell you how to do the digging and the backfilling, whatever, your line of work is the construction and 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 I would defer to you. It's the same thing. They seem to know that if with proper. Thermostats and proper adjustment, this will work and and I and I've got to defer to their expertise. I I I just. Can't see any other way. Um, and I'm also going by what the people that have lived in that building since it was built are telling me what happens. When those doors open. So.
Mary wanted to get in word in edgewise, Joe.
Okay, I'll shut up.
I'm just asking for some clarification here. Um, so the twelve thousand nine hundred dollar. Proposal is for the. Boiler only boiler and the installation and so on. But it does have a note that it says bigger boiler for modine. So this is what we would need if we went to modine. Is is that correct? That's the first question.
It's the boiler that we would need to be able to add modings to. There are.
Okay, so that's the first one. The second part is, is this the same amount of money as what we saw in the original bid?
No.
Okay. Third question over on the proposal which adds the modings. That's modings only, not the boiler because that's covered in the first bid. Why is the eighteen thousand eight hundred crossed off and sixteen thousand inserted?
Uh, when I called and talked to the tech, he was said he needed to call me because he had he had a calculation wrong. So the cost was actually lower than he originally had quoted. So he's like, just cross it off, put it on there, and that's what it actually is.
Okay, so it's sixteen thousand to put the two modings in.
Yes.
Twelve thousand and and this bid, the sixteen thousand, that's the only bid we asked for on this work.
Correct.
All right. And there's no reason why we can't do. The how much more is the boiler, the bigger boiler? Than what we were quoted. I don't have the, this is twelve thousand nine hundred.
I don't have the minutes right here, but I think it's actually in the minutes from the last meeting, but it's not was not a big difference.
It doesn't seem very big. I think it was eleven thousand, the upper part of the eleven thousand.
Not a large difference. If you have a copy of the minutes from the last meeting, they're they're in there.
All right.
They're in the green box.
So. I'll I'll ask another question while Mary's looking. So. Where are we gonna find the heating oil? Money in the budget that we currently have. Because I mean, you're gonna be, they're talking eight dollar heating oil this winter. And you're gonna be burning at least fifteen hundred or two thousand gallons of heat and oil. Um, so you're you're talking some considerable money that we don't have worked into a budget.
Good point.
I mean, we've we've been heating our town garage since it was built for free, literally free.
Except that. That. That system. You really need to, I mean, they had trouble with it. Because you need to change those filters.
Yeah, you gotta keep the filters clean. Yeah.
Yeah, and that I think it's been an issue for.
Yeah, and they they also needs the larger nozzle ran in it so the. The furnace will put out more BTUs in order to keep up with the system, which has been done in the past and. My understanding is it's currently running on a smaller nozzle. Which is why it runs so much.
Uh, right before Byron left, he we ordered a bunch of parts for it. Like he he gave me the part numbers to order for the nozzle. I'm not sure I. I didn't verify it. He just because it appears the part number, that's what we ordered. So so they they do have a a a supply of them, which which you would replace and then clean and then replace. So we cycle them through, but yeah, there are ones that I don't I don't know what size they are.
Well, either way you look at it, we need a bigger boiler.
So here's the answer to the question. Sorry, and I'll just interrupt the. What we're looking at for the modine bigger boiler is twelve thousand nine hundred. The original Johnson Energy bid was twelve thousand four hundred. So it's a five hundred dollar difference. It's not huge.
Very, yeah.
I think the. So the the oil burner on the that waste oil furnace, you can put different sized nozzles in to control how much oil's flowed. So if you put a bigger nozzle, you get more oil, which is more BTUs, which will keep up with the heating system. I know Byron in the past had played with that and he had it. Figured out.
It it's still not gonna cure the problems of the boiler being unreliable. And Walt was in that building almost every weekend this winter. So we're gonna move my. I will make the motion at this point that we accept the Johnson Energy bill of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars to put the new. Heating boiler in there and we can uh. Talk about the other portion of adding the modings. I don't know how much it'll cost to go back in and do it, but at this point we need to change the boiler. So that's my motion.
Can somebody explain to me what modings are?
They're the they're the radiators that hang from the ceiling with the fan that blow out heat.
Okay.
Those are modings.
You've seen them in garages.
We have some downstairs. We have some downstairs in the meeting room.
I I do know that it needed a bigger boiler there. Uh, my son engineers boilers and he said that. That boiler is not sufficient for that.
Worked all these years. I mean, it takes maintenance, but.
Problem from day one. It's it's always been a problem and it's time to move forward. And I have I've made a motion. If somebody wants to second it, we'll move on. Otherwise, we'll talk this to death and we'll go through another winner with problems.
I'm seconding Joe.
So there's still one question, Joe.
We have a motion on the floor and we have a second of the motion and it's just on one half of this proposal, which is the. Uh, Rielo boiler. Proposed by Johnson Energy. Now discussion on the motion.
So where where is the heating oil money coming from for this budget? I mean, you you could be talking up to sixteen thousand dollars in heating oil this winter.
We'll have to figure that out from the board decided to go this route um, when we put decided to go here. We did not budget it. Um, every single budget we have done has a heating. Uh, facet to it that are all gonna be uh, terribly inadequate for the. Coming heating season. And if we have to take this out of a contingency fund. Or a miscellaneous line in the uh, highway budget, then then that'll have to be where it is. But we can do that because that's what they're there for. They're for unexpected costs and and nobody. Could foresee the exorbitant. Uh, escalation in fuel oil prices when we did these budgets back in November. So there's there's gonna have to be a little leeway. In how we've funded stuff because the town office does not have enough money for heat. The fire department does not have enough money for running the trucks or for heating the buildings. Um, and and it's the same with highway. We don't have enough money to pay for the fuels for our equipment and all of this stuff is gonna have to happen. So. We're we're just going to have to. Be creative and we're gonna have to try to do stuff within the bounds that we're allowed to do. And and I've talked this. You know, come up with this idea. It's gonna have to come from one of the. Line items in the budget that are not specified for any specific person, purpose, and we'll have to pay for it. Um, we have to have reliability. And we have to have um, a consistent heat in that building. And we can go through one winter. With a new boiler and see how it works. And if it doesn't work, we can add the modings at a different time. As long as we size this to start with, but but the fuel thing i- is going to be. It's just out there. It is something that nobody expected and it's gonna be a terrible inconvenience to every single budget. Not to mention every taxpayer in town is gonna be burdened with it. So so that's something we have. We can work out. We can make this work.
Joe, but you can't, you can't say.
Whoa, 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 let me let me get. Where is the money? For the boiler coming from?
That's another good question.
We take it out of the capital and the capital improvement fund because that's what it's set up for.
Okay, uh, then that that was my. That was my point and to add to what you said, Joe. I mean. It's a valid question. Where are we going to come up with the money? And it is a question. That every single town, every single municipality, every single jurisdiction in this whole country. Is going to have to deal with the same question because they haven't got money budgeted for it either, I'm sure.
Don, the the issue is this, this isn't unforeseeable. This is a foreseeable expense that we are either gonna approve or not approve tonight. Our. That furnace will work. It needs some maintenance. It needs some maintenance, but we can heat our our highway garage for free this winter. Or we can spend up to sixteen thousand dollars on heating oil. From a budget that we don't have the money in. So I I get you guys, you guys want this oil burner now, but this is. We're gonna have the highest heating oil we've ever seen. Period. You know, and.
Where I understood we were having a hard enough time getting waste oil to put in the furnace.
The Pittsburgh transfer station had to pay last year to get rid of their waste oil.
Yeah, the the problem with the problem with. The problem with waste oil that everybody that has one of these, and I have talked to Earl's, I've talked to Fuller. And I've talked to everybody out there is they know where the waste oil is coming from. And when you, you know, we talked about free. But nobody talks about the fact that. A town employee was in that had to go into that building almost all the time last year. The maintenance thing is all. Talking if if these guys that have been working on it, Walt and Jason know what they're doing up there. They've worked on it. And they've worked on it and they worked on it and it is not reliable. Those types of heating systems work good. In a private garage where you are in the garage all the time. Uh, if I had one in my shop, Fuller's got it in his shop, Earl's got it, but those guys are there and it's their business. When you have town employees. That have to drive in from half an hour away every weekend to make sure that building is heated. It is no longer free heat. It becomes a burden. It becomes a problem. And if for some reason it doesn't get checked. And the whole point of this is that we've been having problems with this from. Pretty much day one. It wasn't wired right and it it kept going off. It it's a. It's a great concept, but it doesn't appear to work good in a public building that is not occupied on weekends. And evenings, you know, it works good, like I said, in the private thing. So. Uh, we can beat this to death. If we have to, we will go and talk to our auditors and ask them. How we can fund this new project without a specific line item and they will tell us the proper way to do it.
So Joe, how about we get crafty? We uh, we own a waste oil furnace. It's in place. We give it a tune up. And we talked to Johnson's about putting the oil burner in tandem with it. So if the waste oil furnace goes down, the oil burner will kick on. We can still burn waste oil. We can keep our budget down. And we'll have both.
It's great if they work, but I don't know if they can do that. And it was a part of it. The the problem is. That I see is is making two things work together for about ten, twelve years now at McKinley Station. We've had two boilers in there. And it took. Probably three years before uh, the technicians realized that one boiler was off on reset. And that's why the other one. Was running and the makeup air fan ran constantly and it kept freezing the water in that little room at McKinley Station. So. To get two systems to work together. I mean, it's a we can ask that question if they think that it can be done, but. If we're if we're gonna make it worse. Then then I'm not in favor of making it worse. I I I like. The concept of waste oil. I do not like the inconvenience of the fact that it doesn't. It's not reliable like it should be because of the. It just they aren't. I I've known everybody that has them and they all tell me the same thing. You have to be. On those, you have to know where the oil's coming from. You have to know what's in it. Uh, companies go so far as to separate. Hydraulic oil and engine oil and gear oil and make sure of what's going in there. So. When you take oil from a transfer station in Pittsburgh or Rutland Town, you have no idea what you're getting. And and that is a big issue. You burn fuel oil, yeah, it's six bucks a gallon or five bucks a gallon. I don't know if Johnson's has quoted us a price yet. They usually do. Um, and we can have a more realistic idea of what it's gonna cost, but running two systems together. Can have its headaches and and we would have to defer once again to the experts if that can be done. And whether or not there's room enough up there to meet codes to put two boilers. In the same space. That that's something else that has to be taken into consideration. Does all this stuff has.
So how about we table this motion until we can find out? We'll do some more research.
The only thing Kurt is that we're getting. We're getting down to the wire and and having to order. Boilers and get that stuff in. That's my concern.
It isn't valid for the next meeting.
Unless we talked with him about extending it.
Possibly.
I I actually before Kurt raised it, I was thinking the same thing. I mean, a lot of us have backup heating in our homes.
So I I don't I don't I don't know the specifics about the system up there, but I remember Walt had said there that when they've had it serviced a couple of times, there was discussion about the circulators. That. The way the way the system was connected, those circulators. Weren't. I don't know if it was efficient, but you know, Paul was here, probably tell me better, but there was something with the way the circulators are. So I get what you're saying about. Wiring them wiring them in 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 tandem. I'm not sure the. I'm not sure how far that would have to go. Like, I'm I mean, certainly Johnson didn't take them into consideration when they when they quoted this. So. Um, because there's the we do have the two tanks right now. So that would change the plumbing. That would change a lot of stuff. So that would basically would be starting over again for. For getting a bid. Yeah.
So I did a quick calculate, Byron, sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead and finish, Mary, then. But I do have something I would like to say.
Well, I did do a quick calculation on just having somebody in there. Once on Saturday and once on Sunday, which would probably be a couple of hours overtime pay per employee. Times two. And I came up with a cost of, you know, double checking on that waste oil furnace of around five thousand dollars. Now maybe that. So that's the hidden cost. If we keep the wa- waste oil burner. And um, have to check on it all the time, which we would.
Okay. To that end, Mary, that slab, when it's heated on Friday afternoon. And no one shows up and that building's not open over the weekend, that slab will continue, will hold that building even if the furnace doesn't run. And keep that building above freezing. I've seen that happen time and time again. No one has to go up there and check the building. Two, that building was permitted by Act two fifty with used oil. Uh, furnace and radiant floor heating as, as a part of the efficiency. Um, portion of that Act two fifty permit. You wanna change the heating system up there, you wanna put in modenes. And you wanna burn number two fuel oil, you better go back to Act two fifty and uh get your permit amended because I, you continue with this discussion, you continue with this. Method. I know that I will file a formal complaint a- against the town with Act two fifty. Um, because of you haven't received your uh amendment to permit to, to do what you're asking to do. There hasn't been a problem with that furnace. That furnace is, is more than adequate to heat that building. It's heated it for more than since twenty sixteen. Without issues. Yes, you do have to do some maintenance on it. I will not deny that. Um, if it didn't heat the building adequately this winter, it's probably because they're running the number one nozzle in it instead of the number three nozzle. And, and, and there's plenty of number three nozzles up there. There's also a brand new uh glow plug up there. Has anybody put an ohm meter on the old glow plug? To see if the old glow plug is putting out adequate amount of heat. That was one of the issues that we had very early on was that the glow plug wasn't wired. So there again, you know, y- you can rely on whoever else you wanna rely on. But that furnace does work and it has heated the building and very cost effectively for the town. Go ahead and, and vote any way you wanna vote.
Appreciate your input, Byron.
Move we table.
Motion to table is uh not debatable. All those in favor.
It does need a second.
Second. I, I was presuming it would have a second and it does. Motion's been made to table the discussion. Uh, and the motion's been seconded. All those in favor of tabling the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Do I hear aye from you?
Aye.
There's three votes for tabling the motion.
I voted in the.
Joe voted too. Pardon me? Joe voted for it too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I'm sorry, Joe. There's four, four votes.
We got some que- if there's some questions that need to be answered, then we need to look into it and we need to make sure we do this right.
I would say that we should do this uh post haste. Who's gonna do the checking with whom?
I got it.
Got it, Bill?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Problem.
That takes these two issues. Off the table for now.
The last thing I have is a proposal for concrete work. Uh, it has been a, a surprisingly difficult search to get someone to. Even come out here. Uh, so I got a quote from Ellis Concrete to repair the concrete pad at the front door and at the base of the back stairs. Uh, they would, they would demo both areas and repour uh new concrete. The one at the front door. Has a lot of pits. It has a, a, a hole that's been filled a few times and, and it's just the salt over the years. It's, it looks to be. Possibly the original pad to the, to the building. Uh, and at the base of the back stairs, we have a similar problem and actually. The pad extends out into the driveway a little bit and there's some fairly sizable chunk taken out of it from when the snowplow hits it. Uh, so the new design we were talking about tapers it to the edge of the driveway at the stairs. So that way they can plow past it and not. Run into it. I imagine that's probably gotta hurt when you hit that thing with a snowplow. I imagine probably stops you for a second. Uh, so the one at the front door, uh. You know, it, it's just an, it creates an uneven surface and it would, it would, it would just, so they, they looked at that and, and repairing both sections. So the, the total price is. I believe seventy-six hundred and uh they would uh do the whole, the whole work.
And we've been unable to get anybody to even bid on it, right, Bill?
Uh, it took, uh, that's been about a four, about fourteen months. I've been trying to get someone to give me a price on it.
Wow, and not including the asphalt.
Not the asphalt. That's, that's the, the concrete pad at the front and the back. So the concrete pad by the looks of it. So they, they would have to get some cutting involved because it looks like they poured a pad and then built the building over the top of it. Which. Probably a little more of a challenge than we would probably like to get into, so we don't wanna. Building, uh, but they, they would, they would cut the concrete back and demo what's there. But he said it was, it was done correctly, like the pad was installed correctly. So which is why it's held up for as long as it has, but. Uh, and Byron and, and the guys over the years have been great. They, they put concrete patch in there and stuff, but it's just. It's doesn't hold up over time. So this would be the, the, to, to refurbish both sections. Uh, and the same thing, there's holes in the. At the bottom of the stairs in the back. And then like I said, the step, the step actually extends out into the driveway. So there'll no be, it wouldn't be a step anymore. It'll become just more of a, a little bit of a grade down to the driveway level, so.
And so this is a, this is. This is removal, demolition of and disposal of the existing concrete pads here. Which has to be cut here as well as demolished and demolished out back for four thousand dollars. Which actually, if you wanted to say it's two thousand apiece or whatever. And then to pour the areas where the concrete was removed and pour the back steps thirty-six hundred. So that's a total of seventy-six hundred dollars. Uh, it says total for labor and materials, but it doesn't give a total price, but you can add those two up.
Yeah.
We can, we can add them up. They could have added them up, but they didn't.
So the only true like inconvenience would be when they're working at the front door. We, obviously that should be closed. We, we wouldn't have a handicap accessible entrance during the construction. So we'd have to make, we would do our best to advertise that, but obviously the backs, the back door would become the primary entrance while, while that's under construction, so.
Right.
How long did, did you ask how long it?
It's not, not really that long a process, actually. Like really lyricically, they'd be done in a few days. But they, they would do the demo and then they do the, the pouring. So they do the demo once to get it out there and they do the pouring to put it back, so.
So who's building committee? Joey and Kurt?
I believe.
Building technology, Kurt, yeah.
Yep.
What do you think?
Given, given that we've been trying to do this for two years and we can't get anybody and Bill's finally got somebody to give him a price. It's, it seems a little expensive to me, but it's work that needs to be done. And, and we have tried, like I said, for two years to get somebody to do this project. So I'm okay with, with spending the money and getting it done.
I had one of the person that had bid on it last year and we approved it and I could never got, never got ahold of him. He could, he, he just. Disappeared off this year, so.
How much did we approve it for last year?
I think it was like seven thousand.
So same.
Seventy-six hundred. Now this will come up in capital as well.
It'd be capital improvements, yeah.
Right. Uh, and keep in mind that we have infused four hundred and some odd thousand dollars into capital.
There, there was money in building maintenance last year and I was, I, I just. Could not get anybody. I like, I tried the whole budget year to get people here to do it and I could not get anybody here. That's why a lot of the other projects were done and they were billed right at the very end. I couldn't, I just couldn't get anybody here to do it. So it was part of the aquabilling maintenance budget, but.
There's gonna be a motion. It would be appropriate to come from the building committee.
Well, Dave, Davey, when you guys got the mini excavator, you think you guys could bust up those slabs?
No, no.
No idea. Probably need a jackhammer and. Yeah, I got one you can borrow.
So the, the, the back one's a little more complicated because the stairs are part of it and the. The, the roof supports are part of it. So there, there was, who's looking at that like they have to do some wedging there to make sure it doesn't pop. So that's, that's, that's part of their, their thing. Certainly if you wanna talk to them and see what that would do, if you wanna get involved in that, but I'm not sure if that's.
I'm just trying to find, find some way to.
I would move that we accept the bid.
Motion's made.
If, if we accept the bid and we take this money out of the capital improvement. Technically, it's the money that was in last year's budget that we couldn't get it done because we had forty thousand to do some. Significant work to that building. So we didn't spend anywhere near that. So we're just basically delaying it a year, but. I think this is the way to go. Have somebody in there, get it done and move on.
So I heard a motion made. I didn't hear a second.
I think I wanna hear what. Um, or can we?
Not sure if I would.
It's possible we could second the motion and then somebody could table it, but would that do anything?
We get too many players involved, this thing will never get done again.
Oh, I know.
You know, it's been two years and, and we finally got somebody that's agreed to do it. We approved it at seven thousand and the guy never showed up. We've got a six hundred dollar increase, which is pretty realistic, given the increase in fuel and parts and. Concrete and every other thing. So, you know, it, it's, yeah, it's, it's more expensive, but. Like I said, we've already improved this once. It just never got done.
All right, I'm gonna second it.
Uh, we have a second to the motion to accept the bid from Ellis Construction. Could you give us a little? Information about Ellis? Did you, Bill?
Um, I've never, I've, I've never personally done any, any work with them. You know, I know they're, they're. They do a lot of work in the area. Uh, I had reached out to uh several different vendors, including them. Um, I also put a like post on our Facebook page asking for anybody that could give, you, at that point I couldn't find anybody and they, they were one of the ones people referred to, so. I don't really know them personally or, or, you know, have, I haven't seen any work done personally, but um. I've seen them, a lot of work did on online. I, I've, they post, but I don't know. Anything specifically good or bad about them.
Sure.
Oh, okay. I was just reading. First of all, there's no, there's no bond here, but this is a smallish project. Secondly, we aren't asking for. Insurance, so I would.
Actually.
Do we?
Yes, for vendors that do work for the town, we do ask for insurance.
Okay, well, in that case, I would add it to the motion if Joey's willing. And secondly, I'm just, thirdly, I guess. By signing below, the customer acknowledges that the contractor and/or its subs are not responsible. For any damages to black top, blacktop driveways or curbs, sidewalks or underground utilities. And they'll be working right next to the asphalt sidewalk that's here and the newly paved.
Well, sealed, yes.
Sealed.
The, 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 the.
And we move it though in the.
Driveway will likely need to be repaved in probably three years or four years. I mean, not, not that we wanna make that as the, as a contingency of that, but. The, when they were doing the ceiling work, there was some cracks there filling that just kept going. So, so we, we, that's, that's. Not, that, it's in the, that's in the building five-year plan, but not, not coming up really quick.
Well, you know, of course, it's, it, it, since we've had it recently, whatever sealed.
Yes, that helps to.
I know, but of course, as soon as something happens to it, we'll hear from half the town. What were you people thinking? Yeah.
But again, I, I, but even the driveway ceiling took, I mean, probably about sixteen months to get two bids. Like it just. It's been very difficult.
Did he say he was gonna have any heavy equipment here that he's gonna be running on the?
He did not, not, we did not see that one way or the other. I can, I can find out.
Well, I, I would say.
How about, can we move to table this to the next meeting? I hate to table another thing, but.
Listen, what are we gonna do in between? You know, I don't have any problems with tabling something if there's. If there's something that needs to be done in between, then fine, you know.
I think Bill should call him on these conditions on the, on the asphalt and see if this is just boilerplate, if this is something directed towards us. And if, and if he could remove it. Cause I don't, I don't think we wanna assume any liability of him digging something up.
Oh, second the motion to table. I do think we need to do a little more.
Yep.
Homework, but no reflection on Bill for hanging in.
We appreciate you surfing.
No, and whenever the project is done by whoever is gonna do it, I would still want our own road commissioner. In there supervising what the hell is done. I mean, uh, even, you know, he doesn't have to be there twenty-four seven, but uh. Keeping a pretty close eye on it and asking those kinds of questions like now, you know.
Well, it's a little complicated out there and there's too much that can be destroyed.
Sure it is, but you know, you got an asphalt there and if you're gonna have equipment, what are you gonna run equipment up on that asphalt that's just been sealed and. And then you put cracks in it and you break it up and whatever, whatever, whatever. Anyways, uh. So motion to table is non-debatable. It's been seconded and it's valid at any point in the discussion. Including now. So all in favor of tabling this until certain questions are answered, uh signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear him.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it's uh three to one. I believe you voted, you voted against tabling, right, Joe?
That's correct.
Okay. So three to one, a, the, the quote is tabled until we get answers to the. Uh, condition.
Yep, cause you leave it all right in that folder, that's fine. That's everything I have.
And that's pretty much it for that. Now, um. Committee meeting, uh, okay, the, that's it, Bill?
That's all. That's it, yeah.
That's enough.
I guess not.
Committee meeting updates?
I gave mine.
You gave yours. Are there any other committee meeting updates?
Yes, that we met up there last Wednesday at the uh, where they're doing the water line and there was some stuff that came up that covers. Both uh highway and water and sewer about that project and um, but I think everything's pretty much been resolved. What needs to be done? Evidently our engineers missed a uh paved swale on the south side of Post Road that was. Discovered when they were putting the line in and, and that's gonna have to be replaced as it was. So. I think there's gonna be an additional cost to the uh project that. Uh, Mr. Bowen didn't know about and I think we're just gonna have to authorize that to be done. Um, but otherwise hopefully we'll get, we're closer to getting that finished and wrapped up and. Taking care of so that it's uh meets the residents' expectations to how it's supposed to be done and return to its original. Um, state at prior to the uh work that was done up there. I think everybody agreed on that when we were there last week.
Yep. Yeah, hopefully, hopefully we can get the city to come up at some point in time and shut that water line off. That's our. Only holdup at this point, unfortunately.
Yeah, how are we doing on that?
I haven't heard back from Robert on that.
Okay.
We've been chasing replacing road with.
We've got two things we're gonna do.
Okay.
Yes, and uh there's, there's also an unresolved issue that Kurt's working on with the. Uh, with the contractor and hopefully that'll be settled.
Yeah, hopefully we get that involved.
Okay, uh, there are two more issues. Well, first of all. There is some old business and that is uh, we still have a position. Which is up in the air of Transportation Council Representative uh and, and Chris Holland is here. He was, he was appointed interim until we could make a decision on a road commissioner, which we have done. And that is typically the road commissioner position if he wants it. But Chris attended the meeting last week, which was, is it once a month that they meet, Chris?
Once a month. It's the last Thursday of the month.
Right.
Or the fifth, the.
So if you'd like to come up to the table and give a report on what, what you saw or uh what it is and.
Okay, I attended a meeting last Thursday. Um, Rutland Regional Center, uh, on their agenda was elect officers, Sean, um. From West Rutland is the foreman over there. He's the chairman of the committee, uh, Da- David Lee or the alder, the chair.
Mayor.
Mayor. He's the vice chair, the only two officers. There's no budget. Uh, and then there was a report of what the other town people are doing. Um, in the other towns. Um, and apparently uh there is. This is a source of information to get grants, paving, culverts, box, uh, bridges. Uh, the only, um, they told me JP's walkway is the uh apparent only issue that we have. And uh, as I was speaking with Dave early, um, there's a money tree out there. I don't know if some of it. Rips and goes away or, or whatever, uh, but there's really some. Right, Benson goes away or or whatever, uh, but there's really some information that. I was unaware, aware of of just what this committee does and how it interfaces and they passed in the. June meeting, the list of their projects uh was on the agenda and report and there were none from Rutland Town, so. It's a matter of uh. Getting familiar with just what the role, role is and take.
Yeah.
Get familiar with it if I'm chosen to continue. If not, and then there was some um discussion of what I called uh in the engineering world of miracle stuff. Recycled glass, very light, and there's some projects scattered around uh that. Uh, manufactured up in Essex, uh lightweight, I mean, price was quoted per ton. But how many tons gets on a, a. Trailer, um, if it's lightweight, uh. And the use of it and then it was uh, it was used in this, or they're using it over in West Rutland on a stability project. And so my assumption, I didn't ask, but I thought it was probably subsurface clays that. Uh, were getting impacted and that's why you'd use a lightweight fill and I've had some experience in in that in my. Civil engineering work.
Okay, well. This really boils down to a very simple proposition, you know, as Dave. If you, if you choose to accept the position of Transportation Council Advisor for Rutland Town. Then. We will appoint you. If you choose not to, then we will, uh, we will let Chris continue. Only as the actual representative instead of the interim, so. It the, it's really in your hands and.
I would, I would say that. Since Dave is going to be at every select board meeting anyway, he'll be able to report back, you know, because you're gonna be here. And the thing that intrigues me is the money, the grant money that's out there, and I think we really need to keep a close eye on that, so. I'm I'm hoping you will say that you will do it.
Leaning that way.
Okay.
What did you say?
Said I'm leaning that way.
Do you want another meeting? Uh, I mean, it's, it's a month, it's a month deal, so. If you want to check into it and uh, you know, get with Chris a little more and find out what the ramifications are, then that's fine.
Yeah.
I don't, you know.
Okay.
I just think, and it's no, it's certainly no, uh, it's certainly no comment on Chris's ability to do it because. I think he would do a fine job. It's just that it's, it's always been a position. That has been inherent in the, in the road commissioner for obvious reasons and uh, and so. If you choose to keep it that way, then then that's what we would prefer, so. It's up to you.
If. It it would be from a. Layperson, if you will, standpoint, there is a lot of interface of of the projects in the town. Who, who drives down the road and thinks of culvert inventory in the town? And I stopped to try and think of some of the bridges and, you know, I've been up and down the road a few times.
Now, was there an alternate? There, there is.
Jim Hall.
Jim Hall was the alternate. I reviewed the, I reviewed the uh minutes uh back through November and they only list. People, when people are in attendance, so they didn't go over when towns reported, they didn't uh. They didn't take reports from towns that didn't have a representative present, so there was a little.
Yeah, I might have a conversation with Jim and see because he's been.
Yeah.
He's been kind of weaning himself off from many committees and uh, it it would, it would certainly be by his choice, but if he chose to. Uh, you know, enjoy retirement a little more, let's say.
It's not just to go to church, uh.
No, then.
Meeting, there's some.
We would love to have you.
Knowledge that has to be, uh.
Yep.
Saw as to uh, to be effective. I think, and to Mary's point is that it did sound that there was a money tree there.
Yeah.
Uh, there were grants and uh, and even the. Uh, some of the towns were reporting assistance in in pa- paving projects that met certain criteria.
Yeah.
Uh, and so that's important and obviously we want to.
Well, I think you two would make a good team, so, you know, let's keep that in mind.
You're gonna check with Jim, okay.
Yeah, I'll check with Jim on that. And I will let you know, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
And, and thank you for acting as interim and for going to the meeting. Uh, we have one more piece of unfinished business. Uh, there's another. Uh, select board, the special meeting we had, we didn't approve.
Right. Move we approve the minutes of the special select.
This was the special meeting on uh.
Last Thursday, the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the special meeting minutes of June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved. I've signed, we, let's get some signatures on here. Joe, you can come in and sign.
Oh, Joey abstained.
Joe abstained, that's right, that's right, Joe.
Yep.
And. Is there any new business to come before the board this evening? Any new business to come before the board?
Here we are, turn.
Hearing none, that motion would be appropriate and the second would be appropriate and all those in favor would be appropriate.
Aye.
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 And thank you very much.